For sent to chapter 551, title 5, section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice was given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021 at 5:00 p.m. via the WebEx teleconference meeting link provided on the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. The members of the public wishing to participate could join by joining the WebEx teleconference link or the phone number and access code. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. It is now 5:01, we can call. And I just confirm that we cannot have Commissioner Mungia present.
I didn't hear what you said. You wanted to confirm what?
I just wanted to confirm that Commissioner Mungia had not joined since I started reading.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Meeting's order. Would be the invocation. Pastor Brett? You're on mute, pastor.
Okay. Thank you. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have here in the city of Brownsville and in the United States of America. Lord, along with those blessings, we thank you for the beautiful weather we're having right now, and we do ask for the rain that we need and the amounts we needed and the timing that will be good. Lord, we lift up those that need healing right now, and we ask you to bring healing. We ask you to bring comfort to those who have lost loved ones. And Lord God, for our nation, we ask you to bring clarity, the kind of clarity that will bring understanding and acceptance of your truth and that will bring unification of our nation. We ask you to bring all of us into the understanding to see things the way you do and to walk accordingly. Lord, I ask you to give our mayor and our city commissioners divine wisdom for this meeting tonight and everyone who presents anything for the best for the city of Brownsville. We ask all of these things in the name of your precious Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short moment of silence for those where we can all add our prayers to what has already been spoken.
Thank you, pastor. Have a great day. I don't know if you're sitting on or not, but thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do have to leave. Thank you, though.
Our next item is our public comment period. I will read the names in the order of which they were received. The first public comment form received was Michelle Serrano. Michelle, are you present?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Hello, Michelle. Welcome. When you're ready, go ahead. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today here. I am commenting in regard to the consideration for term limits for elected officials in the city of Brownsville. It is my vision for the future of the city that we strive for consistent and progressive change. And often when change comes, people might find it scary or something that they don't want. But considering that our city is on the border and has billions of dollars that go through it, and there's a lot of history there, especially with the historical names and the people who have been in power historically here within the city, I do believe that, especially for council manager associations like our city, we should have a little bit more of a check and balance for our leadership. And limiting terms is a good thing. One, because it eliminates the perception that there might be some sort of ethical violation. And if there were ethical violations that were happening, it could only happen within a two-year scope, and then we would have somebody new in there, or a two-term scope, that's what I mean. And then we could put somebody new in there. And additionally to that, just to have new ideas, like we have a lot of folks out here who don't have the name recognition, who don't have the silver spoon. And I do believe that we need to move in a direction that is a little bit more equitable and provides justice for all folks who live within the city, which is a city that lives in persistent poverty and needs special attention and special care for all people, not just some people, not just people who vote for you. And yeah, that's basically it. Do a good job, do good, work with your city administrators. If you want to continue public service, there are other options for you. And that will conclude my statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next commenter is Jose Colon Nubias II. Jose, are you present?
Yes, I am present. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joe Colon Nubias. You all probably know me as being on the task force for the LGBT community here in Brownsville. But right now, I'm coming to you as just a constituent here in Brownsville. I'm here to see the leadership know that I am in favor of the commission and mayor amending the city charter via the ballot box to include term limits for these respective officials in the city of Brownsville. I believe this issue goes beyond just any one person on this commission. It is about creating a city government that curbs career politicians and potential corruption, allowing for a more representative democracy of the people. City government in Brownsville already has its fair share of barriers for the community, including the lack of Spanish or ASL translation at city meetings for city agendas. We've seen in the case of the Fronton Street debacle that even when the people of Brownsville finally come to understand ordinances and policies, they're often overlooked in favor of developers and those who are more privileged. That being said, term limits really do allow for political mobility beyond those who have the means to run, but allows for fresh new voices and fresh ideas to be injected into local government. Too often, people in this community do not feel represented, even by the officials they help vote in. Then we have, for example, the complete absence of some commissioners at any of the commission meetings, effectively leaving out their constituents from important decisions and conversations. So again, I really do hope that this is something that is approved and voted on this evening and that it does happen to go to the ballot box, so that really then the community and the city of Brownsville can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Our last commenter was Ofelia Alonso. Ofelia, are you present?
Hi, yes, ma'am. I'm here to comment on adding term limits to the city charter. In support of that, I do think it's really important that we place term limits in order to not have career politicians that are so out of touch with our community that they no longer represent our best interests. I think it's also just a general progressive issue that we have seen make it to a national stage. And if there's one way where we can start enacting that change, it's at the municipal level. And it should be on the ballot box so that as a community, as a city of Brownsville, we're able to vote on it and decide what suits our community best. And it is also a good way for us to have fresh new voices in government and the opportunity for people to come in and give their new ideas and leadership to the service of the city. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Ofelia.
Okay, Mayor, I just wanted to note that we did receive four other forms, but they just wanted to register their opinion. They did not wish to comment, and those were sent to all of the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is our work session. And item number one in the work session is presentation of the 2021 Legislative Agenda City Manager's Office.
I have our legislative consultant, Mario Martinez, here. I think, Mario, can you unmute yourself? Mario is just going to give us a little report from Austin, what it is, you know, what it is happening over there, what he expects this legislative session, and what we can expect moving forward. So, Mario, if you are on the line, I assume, proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, city manager, Commissioners, Happy New Year. God bless y'all. The first thing I do want to reference is some terms that the pastor referenced, clarity and divine wisdom in his opening prayer. And that I hope for the 87th legislative session, which convenes January 12th, with the convening of the Senate and the House. We're going to enter into unprecedented times this coming legislative session. Never before has the state of Texas, its constituency, experienced what we're currently going through. Legislatively speaking, we've never experienced this either. As far as major issues, major state issues that will be addressed will be, of course, the budget, the overall budget, the deficit. The Comptroller should be releasing his numbers, hopefully the latter part of this week, so that the 87th legislative session will have a better idea of what to deal with. Other major issues that what they would refer to as major state will be redistricting, which is going to be a significantly tough piece of legislation to contend with. Clarity and divine wisdom, again, will have to hopefully be at the forefront in dealing with the budget and with the redistricting. The governor will declare emergency items, and the only items that can be considered on the floor of the House and Senate the first 60 days of a legislative session are those issues that are declared emergency matters by the governor. Issues such as criminal justice reform, health and human services, dealing with the pandemic, dealing with emergency matters, whether it be man-made, natural disasters, whatever the case may be, mitigation on natural disaster matters. As I referenced, the criminal justice reform is going to be a significant issue that they're going to be contending with. Local control issue, as it pertains to local governments, municipalities, and counties, are also going to be very contentious issue. I say this respectfully, I say this carefully. The city of Austin has created a hornet's nest by the manner in which they have handled their local government with the defunding of their police department, with the various reforms that they have tried to put in place, with the various progressive means that they have also attempted to put in place, and that has resonated across the state. TML is going to be quite active in dealing with the local reform issue. Along with the local reform issue, they will also be dealing with the executive orders that the governor will list or has listed from time to time. If y'all recall, there has been a lot of pushback from mayoral individuals and county judges, commissioners' courts on quite a few of the executive orders that have been handed down by the governor due to the pandemic. Again, the issue is the underlying cause and effect is due to the pandemic. We, even y'all, as officials for municipality, have never had to experience a situation like this, and on the state level, it's been the same. So again, clarity and divine wisdom, those two terms that I picked from the pastor's sermon are going to have to be considered front and center in dealing with these types of issues. Legislatively speaking, as far as procedurally, the Capitol did open by governor's order the January 4th, this past Monday, date for yesterday, yesterday, excuse me, opened to the general public. In order to gain entrance into the Capitol, there's only one access and one exit, and that is the north entrance at this time. People are allowed to come in. You do have to be tested. It is, proper protocols are mandated. For next Tuesday, the convening of the 87th legislative session, the House and the Senate will vote, each chamber will vote on their actual protocol. The Senate will be cutting down access to the Senate floor. It will be left up to the individual senators and their offices if they will allow individuals to, from the general public, to enter their offices or not. The same procedure will take place in the House. I have had an opportunity to visit with various members of both the House and Senate, and it's interesting enough that some have clearly stated they and their staff will be behind locked doors if an individual from the general public, an advocate, an entity, a consultant needs to touch base with them regarding a piece of legislation. They either have to make an appointment, and if they're going to enter their office, they have to verify the testing results, negative results, or better yet, serve the interest of virtual visits. I do believe that virtual visits will prevail as a mainstay for at least the first couple of months, and then hopefully with the vaccine and proper precautions, we'll be able, by the grace of God, to get through this. On the House side, it is not going to be order as normal in the sense. The House has to elect the new Speaker of the Texas House of Representatives for the 87th legislative session. So what they will do in earnest is convene, again, January 12th. They will call the House to order. They will have the invocation, they will have the sermon. Then they will have the swearing-in of the members-elect that won during the general election. Once those members are sworn in, you will have a complement of 150 members of the House, at which point the presumptive speaker, Speaker-elect Dave Phelan, will step aside, step to the dais, and the House itself, members of the House, Republicans and Democrats, will vote, cast their very first vote on the election of the Speaker of the 87th Legislature. Once that is done, they will commence to do some housecleaning, they will commence to deal with some of the rule changes, and set the appropriate protocols. One thing that is more important in the House side is that the election of a new Speaker means that he will have the opportunity to appoint all the respective standing committees, major state committees, and select committees. It will take at least 30 days, possibly 40 days, for the new Speaker to appoint all those respective committees. Hence, there won't be a lot to do on the House side, and there's a possibility that they might recess for the first 30 days. On the flip side, the Senate side, they're already in, have their committees lined up, so they will pretty much start in earnest. And of course, I can go on and on and on, and I know that we're in commission meeting, but I'd be most happy to answer any questions that any commissioner, mayor, or city manager might have.
Thank you, Mario. We'll reserve the questions at the end. If you could, whoever's controlling the screen, if you could just scroll down to the second page. Mayor, Commission, the legislative agenda is really supposed to be just kind of a framework. It really is a living document. This could, you know, this does eventually become an Excel spreadsheet with all the bills that we have to follow. And so anyways, this is what, you know, the city manager, myself, you know, just kind of all the topics and all the priorities that are the city's priorities. And so this has been sent to you by email in your check-in. So I'll just kind of briefly go over. Item one, this is a project that has been going on for the last two sessions. We've been able to get some significant state funding and also broker a pretty innovative partnership with DPS, and that is the development of the Tactical Training Center. That center, Phase One, is about to be pretty much shovel-ready. And Phase One is about 8 million, and so that's funding that has been allocated. And so even in a tight budget year, you know, this is a priority. We are hoping that we can potentially get some more funding to do subsequent phases. On the economic development front, we have new space front and center, you know, trying to communicate our wishes to the state with regards to space. Like Mario said, local control and state preemption, you know, past three sessions, we have basically played defense. These two, on the Senate and the House side, you know, they do not like cities. This is a very well-known fact, and we see it every day with the pandemic orders and the emergency orders. With that, you know, item four, five, and six are pretty standard. Criminal justice, like Mario said, is going to be a priority. Transportation is really just, you know, continuing, you know, supporting any funding, transportation funding, continuation of funding that already exists. As you know, you've approved other items with the Texas Water Development Board. We support the continuation and funding of those programs. I think they've been very good programs for us. You know, I think somewhere, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere about 15, 20 million that's been able to come down in zero-interest loans or grants. So that's, those ones have been good, so we want those to continue. And the other two items on the list, item 10 and 11, and by the way, these are in no particular order of importance. The state of Texas has come up with a broadband connectivity council. They have issued their recommendations, and you know, given that we are on the verge of finishing our plan, we will be working to communicate what it is our plan is and what it is Brownsville needs. And item 11, the sales tax destination sourcing, really, the Comptroller's Office has created a rule where, you know, the sales tax is paid at the destination of order or at the destination of delivery. So this would have some impact on our, positive impact on our budget. For those of us, you know, I think everybody at this point that orders off Amazon or any other internet source that charges sales tax, well, that sales tax does not come to Brownsville. We don't get the 2%. The 2% stays where that product is shipped from, not the final destination. So the Comptroller has already issued that that will change, and we just don't, you know, in our agenda, it's really written as a way to, you know, just kind of make sure that the legislature doesn't intervene to change that. And so with that, you have the document. If there are any questions, and like I said, this is a living, breathing document. We can change, we can add. If you have any concerns, if you hear any concerns, please, you know, send them over my way or city manager, and we will address them as we can with Mario and Austin and our legislative delegation. So with that, I will stop and entertain any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ramito, and thank you, Mario, for being here. I appreciate your time and your explanation on how it's going to work this session. I know I'll be seeing you, hopefully, if not in person, at least virtually, so we can discuss some of this and figure out how we're going to approach it in Austin. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Thank you, members.
Our next item is consent agenda items 1 through 7.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Sorry, I can't unmute myself.
That was Commissioner Gilinski just saying she can't unmute herself.
We'll move on to public hearing.
Sorry, I wanted to pull one out of order.
We can't hear.
Okay. Public hearing, item number one, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2020-027 to amend zoning map from dwelling G to lot commercial C1 for lot 24, block 28, El Valle Grande subdivision, section 3, Cameron County, Texas, located at 2608 West Alton Gore Boulevard, Brownsville, Texas, 78520, as shown in exhibit A. I believe planning and zoning is going to speak on this item because the citizen or the applicant's request item was withdrawn due to the resolution of the development question by the adoption of the Uniform Development Code. So I believe there's someone with planning here to speak to that.
That's correct.
Is that Rick? Rick, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of the commission, at the applicant's request, the item is withdrawn.
All right. Thank you.
Public hearing, item number two, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2021-1033-C to amend Chapter 14, aviation, Article 2, by repealing and replacing Sections 14-56, 14-61, 14-62, and 14-63, Airport Department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. The Airport Board wanted the airport to bring this to the commission to review and make some changes to the ordinance. The airport requests and agrees that the ordinance, section 1456, should be changed to increase the number of board members from five to seven. It seems like that was made an error or some sort of paperwork oversight. So the current executed ordinance had reduced the board count from nine down to five, and we were expecting to have seven members. So we recommend that we do that. The other changes to item 56, which would, 1456, which would be no limits, no term limits, which we were just discussing, no term limits, that we wouldn't want to change. The airport doesn't want to change 61, 62, or 63 at this time. But they're all recommended by the board. I think we, and I would like to have legal actually review some of the regulatory language, because I think that there might be some conflict between the proposed language and regulatory authority of the board.
Which one is the one for reducing from nine to five back to seven? Is that 56?
That's 56, yes. We are recommending that, yes.
Yeah. And what's 61?
61 is monthly versus quarterly meetings, and there's some other language changes about whether or not meetings would be convened with consultation of the director of the airport or not. So for the time being, we'd like to keep that. The airport would like to keep it as is. The board would prefer to have monthly meetings and do it without consultation of the director.
So if you vote for 61, that means that they can have meetings every month and not have to tell the director?
Technically, yes. Technically, yes.
Okay. And number sixty-two is to give them unlimited term limits?
No, 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 no. The term limits are also part of the number count in fifty-six. So that would remove any term limit in fifty-six and increase the number from five to seven members.
Can you brief us again then, Brian, on sixty-two and sixty-three?
Yeah, sixty-two, it's actually regulatory and there's language in sixty-two and sixty-three that says the board would take certain authorities that are actually held by the FAA. So it's a language issue. I don't know that, we could probably, if we could get legal to, you know, work with us some on that, we might be able to hammer out some agreements on the extent of authority that the board could have in relation to regulation. It actually says, the preferred language by the board actually says that the board would have, would make recommendations and promulgate regulations and rules for the airport and can't actually make regulation. So I think that the language there would have to be fine-tuned. And it's a very similar thing with sixty-two.
So it seems like the board's trying to go rogue, from what I can tell.
I don't think, I think they just want to make sure that they're effectual. That's all. I don't think that it's trying to go rogue. I think that it's just trying to make sure that they have a purpose.
Director, this is really crazy. You should separate fifty-six out and have each of them up for a vote. And all these items should be up to a separate vote. And if you don't know what legal's opinion is, you should have gotten it coming back or coming to the commission with it. So I'm going to suggest table this until you straighten it out so that we don't just pass one to get the other one and it just doesn't make sense.
Well, we also have some, later in the meeting, we have some board appointments. I would like to get the seven members approved. So if we could get that one item approved, then we could definitely, you know, get legal more involved with the language of the other parts of the ordinance.
So it sounds like what you're recommending then, Mr. Walker, is to go ahead and approve fourteen fifty-six changes now and then revisit sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three? Is that right?
Yes, but fifty-six would also provide the no limit on appointments, which, you know, if you want to do that, you could. That's something that is absolutely something that is not impacted by regulation or anything else.
Which one includes the not having the Director involved?
That would be sixty-one, which is, the big part of that is the monthly versus quarterly meetings. The language in it is what I really have the issue with.
Is the norm to have no term limits? I know that the two EDC corporations have term limits, but what about the rest of the boards in the city?
So, I mean, if we compare the Airport Board to other boards within the city, I don't know that it's apples to apples, but, you know, I don't know. I don't have the answer. I didn't do a comparison, actually.
Well, I would make a motion to expand the board from five to seven only at this point.
We're in a public hearing.
Yeah, just give it a little bit, Commissioner. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here on this item? Okay, do I have a motion to close?
I'll move to close.
You have a motion to close? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Do I have a motion on the item?
I'll move to expand the board from five to seven only.
As per fourteen fifty-six, and those are the only changes and you're making a motion on, correct, Commissioner?
Only to expand the board.
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Neese. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for individual consideration. Item one, consideration in action, if any, by City Commission regarding charter amendments presented by Charter Review Committee. Charter Review Committee, Office of the City Secretary. Item A is term limits mayor. And I believe Assistant City Manager Elizabeth Walker was going to comment on it.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Walker. As the City Secretary indicated, I'm in the office of the City Manager. The item before you this evening is stylized in such a way to correspond to the presentation by the Charter Review Committee in the work session item in early December. This then is the corresponding action item in follow-up to that work session presentation. It is certainly the privilege of the commission if you'd like to consider all of these at once or take each one in turn. But the hope is that by the deliberation by the commission this evening, staff will receive direction from this body, which of these, if any of them or all of them, you would like us to then work with the City Attorney's Office in order to wordsmith the proposition language that would then be included in the election order, that would be brought back then to this body for approval when it is, you would call, the general election as well as the special election for the charter review.
Mrs. Walker, I think it's better to take each item up separately since they're very distinct. I don't think they go together. Some may pass, some may not, so I'd rather do it that way.
I agree.
It's your pleasure, Mayor.
All right.
Okay, so we're on Item A, under Item One, Term Limits Mayor.
I'll make a motion to approve it for a referendum at the next May election.
I'll actually second that. I certainly don't have a problem with that personally, so I'm fine with that. We have a motion and a second. Is there going to be any presentation or anything, Ms. Walker, or you just want us to?
Mayor, the presentation we would have for this evening would be that which was conveyed by the Charter Review Committee. We can pull that back up for your convenience if you'd like to reference it.
I think it would be good. I'll go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and take a vote on this, but I just think it's good for the next items to at least briefly summarize them because there's quite a bit of nuances on them and I think to not discuss them is a disservice.
Would you like us then to bring that document, sir? Go ahead.
I think it'd be a good idea, yeah. But we do have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the term limits for mayor?
Okay. Can you just please repeat them because I'm not seeing the tiny font and so I just, I'm going just by audio, okay?
Commissioner, if you have the packet in front of you, it's on page one thirty-two.
Yeah, but then it interferes. I'm having like technical issues, so then it interferes with the sound and so I can't have the bigger screen around.
No, I'm saying a paper copy. I assume you got a paper copy. Okay, so motion and a second. Any further discussion on Item One A, Term Limits Mayor? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. And just for clarification, Ms. Walker, this is just for it to be put on for a vote of the citizens, correct?
Yes, Mayor. What essentially is happening is the council is giving direction to staff to wordsmith propositions legally in consultation with the City Attorney's Office. So that those propositions will be embedded in the election order and then will appear on the ballot. And so whereas the commission this evening is considering each of these in turn, the voters would have the same privilege. Whatever it is that the commission this evening decides to include on the election order and then adopts the election order next meeting, then the citizens would be able to vote on each of the propositions up or down individually at the May special election.
Okay, thank you.
And there has to be another meeting on this. I think the ultimate deadline is February fifth, but we have January nineteenth to do it, I think. So there has to be a second public meeting. Is that correct, Elizabeth?
The next meeting, Commissioner Neese, would be the consideration of the election order. There is, yes, sir. The election timetable is prescribed by the Texas Secretary of State's Office and there is just a little bit of wiggle room if it is that this commission would like one more meeting to either consider this language this evening, these subjects individually, or the language of the propositions that would be stylized at the next meeting. But at that point, then the commission would have to effectuate the election order.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we've brought up the document where the Charter Committee summarized their recommendations. So you can see on there where their recommendation for both mayor and City Commissioner was two four-year terms. And so the next item is Item B, Term Limits, City Commission.
I'm going to make, approve that for the referendum at the next general election.
We have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. I'm so sorry, I was on mute. I don't know who interrupted me. Counsel, I have a question for you.
Yes, Commissioner.
So on this item, what would happen to somebody who is currently serving as a commission? What would the terms then be?
The terms would be as they exist in the language that it's going to be compared and approved by this commission to go on about. So any changes would need to probably be discussed tonight, the very latest, the very next feeling of the language is actually adopted. So is there any changes that you're requesting or any motions you would like on amending any of the language party tonight would be denied to discuss the content of these amendments to the charter?
So as presented as is, what would the terms be?
Well, in regards to Commissioner, it would be as it's included in the document presented by the City Secretary and that would be that a person who has served for more than two four-year terms, a City Commissioner would probably be recruited from running again for the position of Commissioner. They could always serve as mayor but not as Commissioner.
I just don't think that's fair.
I would like to point out that I have a motion pending, but that Austin, San Antonio, Dallas, Houston, all have this provision among.
I would like to make a motion after this to change and allow the pay to continue serving.
Let's, Commissioner Neese does have a motion pending, Commissioner Tetris, so let's go ahead and take that up first. Commissioner Neese, your motion to clarify is as stated on this document, correct?
Yes, and to be put on the referendum in May. I don't know.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I think that goes without saying, but yeah, it's good to clarify. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Neese. Is there a second?
I'll second it. And I just want to make sure though, when would it take effect? It would take effect after the election so that if Commissioner Gallin wants to run, which is not recruited from running because the voters have not decided whether or not they're going to approve the term limit, correct?
That would be correct.
I would think the effect would still be worked on.
So Counsel, for clarification, so this would only, Dr. Gallin would be allowed one more term, but myself, no more terms. I would be done.
The way this would work is this May, anybody who's running this May would not be affected by this law change because it has not been decided by the voters of the city. But the very next election, everybody on the board will be affected by this.
I think that's very unfair to single myself out.
I understand, Commissioner. We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this?
I would just like to say, as Commissioner Neese started to say, most big cities, Corpus Christi, Laredo, San Antonio, Austin, Dallas, no, I think El Paso doesn't, they all have term limits and they do limit it to two terms for both mayor and City Commissioner. I would, I do think that, we're not deciding it. We're giving the people, the voters of Brownsville, the opportunity to decide if they want term limits. So if Commissioner Tetris feels that this is a personal vendetta, it really is, I see it as more of an opportunity to give the citizens of Brownsville an opportunity to get involved in the political process and have their voice heard.
I disagree with that. I think that if you would at least clarify for anybody currently serving to still have another chance, just like the people in May are, then maybe that would be fair. But I see this as definitely singling myself out and I, you know, I just, I'm not saying I want to stay here, I'm not saying I've made up my mind to run another term, but it's very strongly that the voters of District Two, the reason we created the districts was because there's very obvious, obvious discrepancies in financial, not discrepancies, I'm sorry, differences in background economic situations. That was the purpose and creation of the districts for the City Commission and I just feel like, wow, it should be fair for everybody.
I think the public comments were overwhelmingly in support of this item.
I don't have an issue with term limits, I just have an issue with the fact that it only affects myself.
Do we have any additional discussion?
I'll call the vote.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? I'm actually going to oppose as well, so I think it's a four to two, or, yeah, four to two, so the motion passes. Next item?
Next item is Appointment of Municipal Judges.
Ms. Morgan, your volume's up.
Yes, sir. I was just instructing Leo to bring that document back up. So you can see the portion on the appointment of municipal judges that it's, they're suggesting that all appointed judges should serve a term of four years.
I would make a motion to adopt that and put it on the referendum.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? I do have a question. Currently, this process, Counsel, the process right now compared to what's being proposed is, what's the difference?
What we have in place right now are two-year appointments. For example, the city judges all are subject to appointments for two years, just like the City Manager and the City Attorney's Office. This would be changed to bring the judicial positions more in line with what regular appointments are like for judges. I believe that's why the rule was created. But right now, it's two years for everyone.
Okay, and right now, the appointments are made by City Manager, right?
Correct.
And this is proposing that they be made how?
This is proposing that it continues to be a City Manager's appointment, but the terms, instead of being two years, will be four.
How would that affect those that are there now?
Well, it wouldn't affect anybody that is there now because this still needs to be voted by the city. And so once new appointments come out, the renewable appointment will be four.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes, right now, everybody who's still, who's a judge in the city of Brownsville has, is currently serving an appointment. So once that appointment expires and he's coming up for renewal, should that person be renewed by the City Manager? Then at that point, the new appointment will be four.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm going to be opposed because I don't like the four years. I think it should be two. So I'm going to be opposed, but it sounds like the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the next item, Item B, Initiative. And you can, I don't know if you want me to read, it says initiative would mean the registered voters of the city shall have the power to propose ordinances to the City Commission and if the City Commission fails to adopt an ordinance so proposed without any change in substance, to adopt or reject it at a city election. any change in substance, to adopt or reject it at a city election, but such power shall not extend to the budget or capital program or any ordinance relating to appropriation of money, levy of taxes, fixing public utility rates, or salaries of city officers or employees.
Katie, do we have any motions on this?
I'll make
Sit, Commissioner Neese, did you make a motion? Hear you.
Since Morgan, I'm going to motion to
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I don't know if anybody else heard him.
I made a motion, like in the other ones, to have it placed on the referendum.
Okay, I heard you this time. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm going to oppose.
I'm going to oppose as well. Commissioner Gallin, where are you, and Commissioner Tetra?
I'm going to oppose.
Okay, Commissioner Tetra? You're on mute.
Who keeps muting me? I oppose.
So then the motion dies. Next item?
Citizen referendum, the registered voters of the city shall have power to require reconsideration by the city commission of any adopted ordinance, and if the city commission fails to repeal an ordinance so reconsidered, to approve or reject it at a city election, but such power shall not extend to budget or capital program or any emergency ordinance or ordinance relating to appropriation of money or levy of taxes, fixing public utility rates, or salaries of city officers and employees.
Katie, do we have any motions on this item?
Make the motion to put it on the referendum.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Neese to put it on the referendum, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Commissioner Gallin, Commissioner Tetra, I'm a nay as well, Commissioner Gallin, Commissioner Tetra?
Can you repeat the roll call once more, I'm sorry?
Yes, Commissioner Neese, Commissioner Galowski are ayes, Commissioner Cowan and myself are nays. We're just waiting on you, Commissioner Tetra?
I'm going to say nay.
Okay, Commissioner Tetra? You're on mute again. Well, we can't hear her, so counsel, is that, does that mean the motion fails?
I may have the roll call, I'm not aware of if it's a majority on this or not.
There's two in favor, three again so far, so the motion fails.
Correct.
Next item?
Amending Article 5, Section 16, Emergency Manager's Measures, I'm sorry, it's removing the dollar amount that was in the ordinance regarding fire department emergency measures. Can you go?
As they scroll, essentially, this is the housekeeping item by which it is, which would be removed from the charter, so that it could align with the purchasing policy as approved by the
How does this affect the civil service, Ms. Walker? Because how does it, how is it now, and how will this affect the civil service aspect of it? Because we're talking about the Civil Service Commission. So maybe if you don't know the answer, counsel can explain that to us?
This is Chief Sheldon, the civil service aspect's a different part of the recommendation. This is just removing the dollar amount that, I believe currently it's at $250 for any emergency functions. Those two different ones, the civil service will be the next one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, chief, thank you, thanks for clarifying that. All right, so we have a motion on the first item regarding the dollar amount.
A motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Amending Article 5, Section 22A, Civil Service, changing Civil Service Commission to three members with no compensation, and I'll let Chief Sheldon answer to that as to why the change was requested.
Yeah, currently, we do have a three-person board, there was some language in the charter that one said to a compensated five-member, and then the other language said it was a three-member. Under Texas Local Government Code 143, in our size of this county, we do have a three-member board, so this will align it with Texas Local Government Code 143.
Okay, very good. And this is, you're fine with this one, chief?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, do we have any motions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, I'll go ahead in a second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Item H, Amending Article 5, Section 4A, Nominations, Subsections 1 through 3 to align with the Texas Election Code regarding the minimum number of signatures required on a petition, the petition form required, and the option of paying a filing fee instead of a petition, and the filing and verification of petitions. Basically, we were requesting that the minimum, to amend the minimum numbers of signatures required, because currently, what's in the city charter conflicts with the Texas Election Code. So in this instance, according to legal, the Texas Election Code would take precedence over what our charter says. So we're wanting to make that change, to amend the number of signatures to align with what the Texas Election Code says. And then regarding the petition form required, what's required in the charter is not the petition form that we currently use. We use a petition form that is required by the Texas Election Code and the Secretary of State. And then, we did add the consideration, I guess you would say, of offering an option to pay a filing fee, because, you know, there might be some candidates that might not, would rather pay a filing fee instead of a petition. So there are some cities that do that, and I believe they were recommending if we implemented a filing fee, for it to be 250 for commissioner and 500, 250 for district commissioner and 500 for mayor and commissioner at large. So as far as the filing fee, that's not something that we're saying we were necessarily recommending, we just wanted to offer that as an option. And, but as far as the other items, they're just basically being requested to bring our charter in line with the Texas Election Code.
I'm going to motion to put the referendum as is.
I'll second it, and can I just say, Ms. Morgan, I've been trying to figure out, how do you calculate one-half of 1% of a total vote received? I can't calculate that.
Well, I just had to do this for candidate package, and so you take the number of votes received at the last mayoral election, which in this case was 10,622, I believe, and you calculate what one-half of 1% of that would be, and in this case, that would be if you rounded off 54 signatures. So it's the minimum of 25, or, I'm sorry, the greater of 25, or one-half of 1% of that figure, so.
That's included in the language, I believe, because I remember reading that.
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have any, we have a motion in a second on this, any additional discussion?
The only thing I would ask is, I saw in the charters that they phrased it as, you know, the election requirements or nomination requirements will be as provided by the Texas Election Code, that might save us time in the future in case the wording changes. And so my vote would be to do it more like ambiguous and refer to the Texas Election Code, so that it doesn't become outdated.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I agree with you.
I agree as well.
Okay, does that then require an amended motion?
I think it could be, this could be considered amended motion, but if you would like to not, the Commissioner Galowski can just phrase it.
Commissioner Neese, are you willing to amend your motion?
Yes, in other words, Section 1 and 2 there will be exchanged for whatever is provided in the election code.
Okay, very good. We have that motion, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next item, I, Amending Article 2, Section 21, Parks and Playgrounds, Subsections 2 through 3, changing the title of Parks Superintendent to Parks and Recreation Department Director, changing Parks Advisory Board Committee to seven members, changing recommendations of the committee would be made to the Parks and Recreation Director, and adding recreation to the list of duties for the committee. And I'm not sure if Damaris is in the meeting, but she was, did make this request of the Charter Committee, oh, I see her. So if you have any questions about that, she is here.
I actually have two questions.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
The first one is, we should put the charter with ordinance, because I've seen the other cities address parks more through ordinance. And then the second one, where it talks about resacas, so which are the city resacas? Just the one over by Dean Porter Park? And if so, what do you do? Are there any private property owners that have land that abuts to that resaca? Because then, the whole resaca provision, I think it's going to complicate things if you have private property owners.
Yeah, actually, I had the same concern about the resacas as well.
I'll rely on our planning and zoning to help me out on that. My understanding is that the water of the resacas is the purview in any city property, but the land underneath the resacas is the property owners, and so that wouldn't, we wouldn't govern over the actual land component of it, it would be recreational use of it. But it would be up to, I guess, to go to referendum if that was to be changed. And then the first question was, Commissioner Galowski, could you repeat the first part of your question?
Sorry, because I was making out how other cities did it, and most other cities have parks under ordinances and not, and not in their city charter. So is there a, or, did you want, because I have an old version of this city charter from 2015, and I don't know if there have been any changes, but I didn't see a specific section just for parks. So are you wanting one section just specifically for parks in the charter?
This is what's existing, so we were updating the existing language, it could be removed and go by ordinance if, if that was the choice. Legally, I'm not sure, I think it would have to go to referendum to be removed, but I'll let legal determine that.
Counsel, do you have any?
Yes, I believe Ms. Avendaño was here to address this issue. Ms. Avendaño, are you there?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. The only changes being made here are not in regard to anything about the resacas, that's language that's currently already in our charter. Damaris has just made suggestions as to how to address what the director of the Parks and Recreation Department has called. This language is currently in place. If you wanted to remove it and move it to ordinance, that would be a different motion that we would have to make at this time.
So I'm confused, so if you, and, you know, I'm, it's complicated, but, so if this is a dumb question, I apologize, but if you say the language exists already, then what's the point? I'm not clear on what the change is that drives it to be on the election. Someone please repeat that, because it seems like I'm hearing both things, that it already exists, but...
Damaris, could you go ahead and let them know what the recommended changes are that you suggested in regard to this article?
Let me send the presentation, I gave the Charter Review Committee, I'm going to email that to, I don't know if I'm allowed to share my screen, because I have it up, but as I do that, let me explain. So...
Presentation, Damaris, for you, I already have it.
Yeah, we have to call it out for you.
So Section 21, Parks and Playgrounds, Subsection 1, we recommended no changes. Based on our, my recommendation of reviewing it, whether we want it there or not is another matter entirely. And then for subsection 2, it just references park superintendent, and so our recommendation was that position doesn't exist anymore. So if we were going to keep a title, it was just to update the title, since it was outdated, and change that to the Parks and Recreation Department Director. For the next recommendation, there was a Parks Advisory Board originally through the charter, and it was a three-member board that is no longer active, and there was a subcommittee, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, which is active. And so we, to eliminate the redundancy, we would just change that to be a three-member, change the three members to a seven-member board. And then there is the advisory committee, the recommendation was to have it, the recommendations go to the city commission through the Parks and Recreation Department Director, rather than the city manager, but that can stay, it is not required, it just is for less steps. And of course, to the commission directly through reporting updates. And then lastly, just add recreation to the oversight of the committee, because it, right, as the current language exists, is that it's just parks rather than a recreation programming. And then subsection 4, we had no changes.
To your questions, Commissioner Gallin, as well as Commissioner Galowski, staff is recommending truly non-substantive changes, but the point is well made, to make any changes to this component would require a vote in the election, because the parks element is preserved not just by ordinance, but it is preserved very uniquely for the city of Brownsville in the charter itself. So just to update the language, just to give this kind of refreshed housekeeping to align it with other actions of this governing body, would have to be taken formally by proposition to the voters.
I apologize, I didn't, I thought it was Article 4, so I was looking in the wrong place, and yes, there is a provision of parks, I just missed it. But the resaca stuff, I'm okay with bringing the language up to date, consistent with what is practiced now. I'm not sure, can someone tell me about, like, with the resacas, would it, are there any private property landowners that would be affected by these city resacas? And how do you tell them that they shall pay for any improvement? That's my question, then.
Does anybody have an answer to that? Because that's my concern as well.
This is Jennifer Avendaño. Again, that's already something, that's already in the charter, and it's already a legal provision that the city should be enforcing. So that would be something, I guess, management, Parks and Rec, or the Planning Department would have had to have done in the past, or maybe they've never done it, I'm not aware. That was not a concern that was ever brought up before the Charter Committee, because it's some because it's something that's already in effect.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. My only concern though is if, for example, when they did the resaca restoration in that area, that has already been cleaned, if they're, like, did they assess any fees of private owners? So that the language is actually consistent with the practice, or is the practice not consistent? That's the only issue.
Commissioner, we can certainly work with the city attorney to address the, the language there. If that's the will of the Commission, that that be something that we incorporate in the election order as part of this proposition.
Okay, do we have any additional discussion or any motions on this?
Here's another question that, and I'm asking too many questions. But, so what is reasonable to put as a number of, of proposed charter amendments? That will not confuse people? Because if we have, I don't remember how many there are, but, and, and most of it is that just that we're cleaning up language so that it's consistent with, with current practice. But at what point then would it behoove us to then just try to rewrite the whole city charter so that it's updated? And I know that it's, it's too late to do it for me, but... Instead of having, say, like, ten charter amendments, at what point should we just try to hire and do a whole new charter, city charter?
Commissioner, the Charter Review Committee did review the Charter in its entirety, and these were the whole of the recommendations, housekeeping items as well as substantive changes as being proposed. To, to your point, I think what's important for the, for the ease of the voters to minimize any confusion is just the language of the proposition itself. And it is sufficient under the election code to have summary language for each of the propositions. And there could be a document on the city's website, for example, that would elaborate on, on each of those propositions.
Then I'll move to put these park changes on the ballot so that it conforms with current practice and what state all requires.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, last one. Amending Article Five, Section Twenty-Eight, to include Section Twenty-Eight A, establishing an audit and oversight committee. I will let Jennifer comment on that, because she did work very, very closely with the Charter Committee on this. So she may be able to speak to any questions you have about that. Is she still on?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Mayor, basically what the Charter Committee Review Committee did was they went ahead and they agreed, they adopted and voted on whether or not to present to you the Audit and Oversight Committee to put into the Charter. And all they did was modify one or two terms within the rules of procedure, the bylaws that were previously adopted by the Commission last year. I recommended to them to cut back significantly in regard to certain portions that they wanted to put in, and just made it an outline of sorts so that all of this information didn't need to go into the Charter. I believed it was unnecessary and a bit overwhelming. Most of it could be addressed by ordinance, but I'll leave that up to you, your discretion.
I actually was thinking the same thing, Jennifer, because it's really dense and there's so much language in this. It seemed like more of an ordinance-type issue than a charter issue, but that's just my opinion.
I'll move to present it as a reference, according to how, or, limited, I think. It can be abolished, but the, the, done by...
Commissioner, Commissioner Neese, you're cutting up really bad. I really couldn't hear what you're asking, other than, I mean, if you're asking for it to be put on the way it's recommended, okay. But if not, you may need to move or something, because I couldn't really hear you.
Okay, I'm going to try. I'm to do it the way commanded, which is establish it in the, so that it can be, but it can be...
Did anybody get that?
I think he's asking that it be placed on the, on the ballot with the recommendations of the, is that correct, Commissioner?
Okay, I'm not sure what connection, but I'm to adopt it with the recommendation of Ms. Avendaño.
Okay, so Commissioner Neese is making a motion to put it on the referendum based on the recommendations of counsel. Is there a second?
I, I second.
Can you repeat what the, what the recommended summary is? Does it include the part where how they get elected to be on there?
Jennifer, that's a question that you can answer.
Can you specify what exactly is going to be on this, on the city charter?
In regard to the composition, if you go to the bottom of that screen there, Lori, scroll down, there should be my recommendations and edits at the very bottom. In the composition, I put in there that the Audit and Oversight Committee shall consist of three members. That, and if you look on the notes side, I put two of the three members are currently part of the City Commission. And whether or not they would like for that language to continue or not, they did not make any recommendations as to that. So if you guys still wanted to put language in there in regard to that, that would be something that you would have to do. So the members haven't been, according to the recommendations that I made, I only said that there's three members on the committee.
Well, I...
Section Three, Lori.
I would have, my motion would be that it be proposed to the Commission.
Sorry, Bennett, cut off, but I was under the understanding that it wanted a five-person committee. So now...
Okay, so let me try again. That the members of the, if there's three members, they should be Commissioners, all of them. Would that come through?
Yes.
Yes. That's fine, but, oh, okay. So then I would ask John, are you okay with that? Because I thought it was going to be a five-person committee. At least that's what I read.
I think that was my understanding as well, and it was going to be, you know, voted on by the Commission on who gets to be appointed to that, to that committee.
I agree.
So, so whether it's a Commissioner or, or a private citizen, it's up to the Commission to appoint.
And I would want it to be that in the city charter, that it has to be by, by five out of the seven city Commissioners, or City Commission. So that it's not just like a, a straight majority, it has to be a supermajority, I guess.
I agree that it should be five members, and I don't agree that they all should be City Commissioners.
Yeah, I'm really, I mean, at this point, we, I'm not even sure what the motion is, and it's really confusing. Commissioner Neese, do you want to go ahead and take a stab at making a motion again?
No, if, if it's going to be voted down, no, so I'm drawing my motion.
Okay, very good.
Can we bring it back at the next meeting? With amended language?
I don't think that would be wise, because we're going to be cutting it close as it is. If you want to make your motion, John, just make it the way you want. And if you want five members and not as good as Commissioners, I'll support that. Although I think it's going to raise the political static on the committee.
Yeah, so... You know, I, I'd like to make a motion to put, put the Audit Committee into the Charter, making the city auditor report directly to the Commission and not the City Manager, as well as have five members that are appointed by the Commission, and report on a periodic basis to the Commission on, on its findings.
I'll second that.
Is there a second, was that second, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Did you want the supermajority?
Yes, supermajority.
Will you second that, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Lori, is Commissioner Tetra still in the meeting? I don't see her.
No, sir, I show that she left after we talked about the citizen referendum.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, item two, consideration and action on the Seventeenth amended declaration of local disaster for public health emergencies, City Manager's office.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Helen Ramirez, Deputy City Manager. We had modifications to the measures, the seventeen measures, that included a curfew that had been approved by Cameron County. However, we have received word at five o'clock that they have rescinded the curfew. So this had been included because of that. And so we may want to consider striking that from the draft measures that were sent to you. Other than that change, there are no other changes, other than the measures will remain in effect until February, the second of February of 2021. So a little under a month from today.
And Helen, I would just like to point out, the language on page three, section eight, regarding the curfew for the county, does mention that it would continue unless extended, modified, or terminated early. So I think the language kind of provides for that in case the county did terminate it early, which they did. If, if anybody wants to make a motion to, you know, strike that language, that's fine. But I think we're still okay, even with the language that's in there now. Am I, am I right, Renee?
That is correct.
Okay.
Can you, somebody flashed a, a graph with a bar graph, was that related to this item?
Yes, Commissioner Gallin, we are going to, Dr. Gallin, we, Mr., Dr. Rodriguez was going to give a follow-up as to where we are with our trauma service areas. And so that was, in, in order to give a little bit more information on, on the, on the difficult situation that our hospitals are, are confronting, we wanted to give you that information as well. So if you, Mayor, Dr. Gallin, I mean, if you'd like to allow Dr. Rodriguez to speak to that issue?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, next line. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Amos. So we, we just wanted to end this for the public's sake. What is a trauma service area, Region V? Basically, it's twenty-two regions in Texas. We are considered as Region V. And currently, under the Governor's Order, TSA region that exceeds fifteen percent is allowed to, under current Governor's Order, to bring their occupancy from seventy-five percent to fifty percent, based on a seven-day TSA rate above fifteen percent. The current language in the Seventeenth Amendment Order allows for us to pivot, should that occur. And the graph below allows us to explain a little bit of our strategy that has already begun. Since January first, the green bar has been above fifteen percent. At sixteen point four nine, fifteen point nine two, sixteen point six percent. And then today's numbers, which is on the last far right, is seventeen point seven four percent. So this would be day number four. If we continue on this track, Friday will be the expected day where the city can expect to decrease a seventy-five percent occupancy to fifty percent. And our current strategy is, we have begun outreach this Monday to message both our establishments and through our boots on the ground, and, and spread the message that at this point, it is very possible that we will be doing this. And the hospital call this morning really highlighted the, the ICU's occupancy numbers are really at ninety percent, and they're reaching a, a critical mass point where between the availability of nurses and beds, this measure would be an effective measure for us to, to limit the number of cases that are occurring as a consequence of the increasing positivity rate that we're seeing in our region. And then just in comparison, Laredo continues to be at really high rates. Today's number for Laredo is forty-one point two five. In contrast, Corpus Christi is thirteen point six one today, and we are at seventeen point seven four. For us, it's about an eighteen percent increase from one day to the other. So to our, to our citizens out there who are listening, these measures are part of the big picture that we have strategies to control and limit. So that the threat level matrix, which is at four, continues to message to our citizens that we need to be cognizant, we need to continue wearing our masks, need to continue social distancing and sanitizing our hands to bring the positivity rate back below fifteen percent. The other thing I would like to add is, once it's triggered, it takes seven days of consecutive fifteen percent or below to go back to a seventy-five percent threshold. So just the way we go into it in reverse order is the way we come out of the seventy-five percent to fifty percent measure.
So, Dr. Rodriguez, I had a question. And so assuming that that is true, let's say that it is triggered, hopefully it's not, but let's say it is triggered on Friday, that would reinstitute the curfew as well as the percentage occupancy?
Not the curfew, ma'am, but the percent occupancy.
And so who governs the curfew? Is that entirely up to the, to the judge, or is that a state thing as well?
I, I will defer that question to legal. We were following the county's, shadowing the county's order. But I believe under the Governor's Order, they've limited the curfews, and I'll let Mr. DeGuss answer that question.
Okay, before you, before you answer that, Renee, I had one more question. And that was the, the percentage, it, does it, does the state have room in that formula to include the fact that there may not be enough staff to staff the beds, the, the raw number of beds available in the hospital?
I don't think I've seen that language, Commissioner, but if counsel or Art have a response to that?
Okay, so yes, they, they are looking at that. But what the state does is, the hospitals can submit a, a request through the EMC to, for nursing staff to be able to fill in the gaps where the local hospitals may not be able to meet the demands of the service.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Renee, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to add that the language needs to be in harmony with the Governor's order, regardless of what other guidance we get from the, from the county.
Thank you.
Okay, Art, do you have anything else?
No, sir, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve, I have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Load my abstention, please.
Commissioner Neese will abstain, motion passes, thank you.
Item three, consideration and action to award contract to G and T paving LLC for street and drainage improvement projects, including Calle Espacio, Calle Galaxia, Los Ebonos Boulevard, Elmar Street, and Del Valle Boulevard, located in District Four, for the amount of three, three million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, one sixty-six, and forty cents, as budgeted in the capital improvement program IFB. the amount of $3,424,166.40, as budgeted in the capital improvement program IFB number CIP-60-0920, Engineering and Public Work.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Delo, I'm the Assistant City Engineer for the City of Brownsville. For this particular project, we received four bids. Like Ms. Lori said, the low bid was of $3,424,166.40 from G&amp;T. The high bid received was $5,942,690 from Foremost Pavement. The engineer's estimate for this project was $3,503,900. So we're within the estimated amount for this project. This project does consist of street complete reconstruction in the cost of $2,441,001 and utility improvements in the amount $93,055.40. After we backed the bid and the bidders, along with our office and our project engineer, the experience with this contractor that we've had with them in the past, we recommend that the City of Brownsville award the construction project to G&amp;T Paving LLC for the base bid price received. If y'all have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them at this time.
If there's no questions, I'll move to approve this item.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Delo.
Item four, consideration and action to award sole source contract to JBT Aerotech Corp. for installation of the passenger boarding bridges for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport for the amount of $200,664, as budgeted airport department.
Good evening again, honorable Mayor and Commissioners. The airport removed this from the Spoglass Award, and we took a deduction for that. Change Order 11, and now we're just bringing it back as we expected we would have to do. And it's budgeted, so this is, again, the breakdown of the details of the funding that is funded.
I'll move to approve.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item are board appointments. Item one, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2021-003, to appoint or reappoint members to the LGBTQ Task Force City Manager's Office, and I believe Marina will be presenting this to you.
Yes, good evening, honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Happy New Year. My name is Marina Soleski, I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. We also have our co-chairs here from the LGBTQ Task Force. And the task force is made up of seven members. There's currently one position available. After a member resigned, the task force members shall be appointed by the City Commission, and they shall serve without compensation. So as you see here on the slide, we have one resignation. The member was appointed by Commissioner Gowan. Next slide, please. And we received a total of 19 applications, four of which reside outside city limits, and the rest are listed there by district.
Okay, do we have any motions? Commissioner Gowan, I defer to you first if you have any recommendations or any nominations since your outgoing members, the one that you appointed.
I would. I would recommend Christopher, where's the list? There it is. Is there a Christopher Garcia on the list?
I see a Christopher Gallegos. I don't see anybody with the last name Garcia on there.
Yes, I don't show.
I don't know if it's the same person.
Let's see. Let me see if they have a middle name, Commissioner.
I can't open the packet to see the.
So we. I'm showing, it's Christopher Gallegos within that district. I don't show a Garcia.
Yeah, there's no Christopher Garcia.
Is he 20 years old? Can you tell how old he is?
It, yes, it's right around that range.
Okay, I'll recommend Christopher Gallegos then.
Okay, we have a motion for Christopher Gallegos, is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2021-004, to appoint members to the Special Needs Advisory Board, Office of the City Secretary, Parks and Recreation Department. Okay, so this committee was established by ordinance, and at one point in 2011, four members were appointed. They never appointed a full committee of seven. Then their terms expired in 2015, and no other members were ever appointed. So it is a committee to be made up of seven members according to the ordinance revisions. Obviously, they serve with no compensation, and we received these applications, and we have them noted on here by district. And each commissioner and the mayor get an appointment, so those are, we send you the applications. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. You stated that every commission member gets an appointment, correct?
Yes, sir. And it looks like, you know, if you look at the list, we only have one application from District One, so, and then also, Commissioner Tetra has left the meeting, and Commissioner Longea is not present.
Okay, so then I'll go ahead and I'll just take them in order. I'll go ahead and, every commission, go ahead and nominate someone. Commissioner Gowan?
I'll nominate Rudy Flores. I know who is Rudy Flores. So that's who I want for District One.
Okay, Commissioner Golansky is nominating Rudy Flores, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Gowan?
I'm going to nominate Myra, I can never pronounce that.
Boya Bries.
There you go.
Okay, we have a motion for Myra Bries and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, Commissioner Neese?
Leslie Garcia.
Leslie Garcia, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, Commissioner Gowan?
I'd like to nominate Maribel Leos.
Here we have a motion for Maribel Leos, is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, I'll go ahead and nominate Anna Chavez.
Second.
There are a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Should we do?
I'll go ahead, I mean, I'd like to give difference to the other two members if they show up to the next meeting, if not, then just be ready to nominate somebody. That's okay with everybody?
It's open.
Okay, Mayor, we can add that to the next agenda if that's what y'all prefer.
I think that's the best approach for now.
Item three, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2021-005, to appoint or reappoint members to the Airport Advisory Board, Airport Department. I believe Griselda Vasalas Garcia is here to present on that item.
Okay, I don't know. This is, again, Mayor and Commissioners, Bryant Walker, the Assistant City Manager Office, and Aviation Administrator. So the highlighted in yellow members, those are the ones that their terms have expired or expire at the end of this month, then we need to reappoint or appoint new ones. That includes, well, the highlighted members. These are the applicants that put in, and I don't think that we have the existing ones highlighted there. But it would be Johina Hossa, the third one down, Patricia Guillermo, fourth one down, and then the bottom two, Juan Chapa and Ed Rivera.
Commissioner Tetra, an ex-officio member?
She is, she is. So that was just the full complement of the board members.
I'll move to appoint Patricia Guillermo. Sorry about that.
We have a motion to appoint Patricia Guillermo, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Council, one individual resides outside of the city limits, does that make them, does that disqualify them?
I would need to review, Mayor, there's some boards that allow it, and I'm particularly sure about this one in particular.
Okay. Well, subject to your review, I'll go ahead and nominate Ed Rivera to continue to serve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
I'd make a motion to appoint, there's one more opening?
Two more.
Two more.
Juan Chapa.
We have a motion for Juan Chapa, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Gowan or Commissioner Golansky, you have any nominations?
Well, I could appoint Rudy again, or I'd like to see more women. So I'll defer to someone else.
Okay, Commissioner Gowan?
I'll appoint Manuel Foci Morales.
Okay, we have a motion from Manuel Foci Morales, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that fills it out, thank you. I don't believe there's any further business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, we'll see you next time.
There being no further business to come before the commission, upon duly made motion, the meeting has now ended at 6:45 PM.